Dr. Kimbrough is muted.
Oh, I hope that's better. Thank you very much. I gotta mute the telephone in here. Hello, everybody. Welcome to Dr. Dean, excuse me, Dean, Dr. Savannah Shidoka's Town Hall Meetings. Now, these meetings are extremely crucial because not only do they set the tone and the tenor for the semester and the academic year, but they place us a little bit closer to our mission and organizational objectives here for the School of Business. We have a number of people who are going to participate today, and we're all thankful and grateful that they're taking time out of their packed, busy schedule. So I want to be mindful of the time and respectful for everybody who has joined on to this Zoom call. And our panelists include Dr. Cynthia Clem. She's the Executive Director of the Center for Academic Leadership and Student Success, as well as Department Chairs, Crystal Hudson, Dr. Crystal Hudson, and Dr. Paul Brown, and I believe Dr. Donald Best.
I hear. Thank you.
It looks like everybody is here and everyone is in place. Let me establish some of the ground rules. At the end of the presentations and the comments, we're going to open this up for any questions that the students or other panelists, participants might have in surface. You can go ahead and log those on to the chat or certainly wave your hand. I will chronicle everything that's going on in the chat room, and I will ask the the appropriate individual for response to your particular question, given the timeframe that we are in, and that timeframe is 12:15 to 1:30, and we are five minutes behind. So having said that, let me open this up to Dr. and Dean Savannah Shidoka, who will certainly bring greetings and introduction of the Clark Atlanta University School of Business Leadership Team. Dean, let me pass the baton on to you. The moment and the hour is all yours.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kimbrough. I really appreciate the opening introductions. Thank you for leading this occasion. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting, especially the students, because this is a session for you. I want to start by just thinking Dr. Kimbrough mentioned everyone except Ms. Cook. Ms. Cook, unpause and introduce yourself to the group. Ms. Cook?
Yes, I didn't. I didn't quite hear what you said.
Okay, I ask you to unpause and introduce yourself to the group.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. Everyone, my name is Cynthia Cook, and I serve as the Director of Undergraduate Student Services here in the School of Business. Welcome and thank you so much for being present today.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Thanks so much. Dr. Hudson, are you here?
I am. Good morning and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dr. Crystal Hudson. I'm the Department Chair over Accounting and Finance, and again, welcome.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brown.
Good afternoon, Dr. Brown, Chair for Decision Science and Economics. And again, too, then, right? Really, yeah. Thank you guys for taking time. I just scheduled to be part of this.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And right next to him, Dr. Donald Best.
Good afternoon, everyone, and again, welcome and thank you for being here. I was hoping this was going to be face-to-face, but it's not my call, and I'm very excited about seeing everybody again on Zoom. So we've pretty much been zoomed out, but I'm excited about being here. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That is the leadership team for the school group, and it was important to call on these folks to introduce themselves so that you actually see them and can recognize them when you see them in the hallway is a right young hall. I want to take the occasion to thank Dr. Clem, who has taken time out of a very, very, very busy schedule. To spend a few minutes with us, you will hear from Dr. Clem before the end of this program. Here's the setup for a town hall meeting. The purpose of town hall meetings is to, is to follow, is to disseminate information so that everyone has the same information and to answer questions so that you are getting answers from the people who know the answers. Without these forums, things tend to go around the rumour mill. You hear things and you get parts of the information, some correct, some incorrect, some complete, some incomplete. The intent of the town hall is really to have a forum that we allow the students to to hear from us, the administration of the school, and then answer questions directly from you. So that is the purpose of the town hall. We want to be transparent. We want to be able to share information with you. We want to be able to address your concerns. There are some basic things that we will do here today. I just want to first thank the students that are signed on. We should have something in the order of 800 students signed on here. I see a total of about 84 people, including us. I'm not sure why students don't show up for town halls, because it really, we're taking our time to be available for you. And I really, I hope that message gets through, because we want to, again, be transparent and admit to possibly face-to-face to answer questions that you have. First, about our return to campus this semester, as you all know, there have been several communications from the university that has, I hope, kept everyone up to date on where we are. As you know, we started school and then we had a shut term, remote delivery of instruction. And as of yesterday, by the university communication from the Provost, we are fully back on campus. What was apparent should be to all the students and faculty is that there were some movement and reshuffling of classes to accommodate schedules, to accommodate the need to have possible social distancing classes, to move classes, small classes that were in large classrooms out of those areas, and move large classes in small classrooms into larger areas. All of these were to accommodate, again, the need to space, to make sure that we are all safe and operating in a safe environment this semester. Along with that is the movement of some classes to what we have, we turn the high flex classrooms, that is with technology, to allow the faculty the flexibility to use technology in the classroom to enhance instruction. All of that was accomplished during that period of temporary remote learning, such that at this time, we hope that all of that has been done, and we hope that you, the students, know where your classes are being held and can then go back to the right classrooms. I am hopeful that everyone knows where they are now, because as that Monday morning yesterday, everyone should know where they are in the scheme of things. That's one. The other is, again, for this fall semester, being the first town hall, I just want to welcome everyone back. Welcome our continuing students. Welcome new students, especially to the school. I hope the transition is working out well for you. I want to, as I do always, indicate to you that your home is here in Wright Young Hall. You may be taking classes all around campus now, that you have a home here in Wright Young Hall. We have the the privilege of being an ACSB accredited institution. For students that are new, that may not mean much, but accreditation by ACSB is a distinction that is held by only 5% of schools offering business degrees worldwide, 5%. And to date, is only about 875 institutions across 56 countries that have ACSB accreditation out of thousands of schools that offer business programs. What that means is that we have a certain standard of excellence that we must uphold as a small part of maintaining that accreditation. So I mentioned that strictly for the fact that we need to to develop you and prepare you for careers based on some specific standards, and we'll take some time to talk about those standards today. There are some things that I will get into in future town halls, and some of which you will hear over and over from me. Some of the themes that will run constantly across our programs is that I want you to be performance-oriented so that you are looking to perform and do your job and know that your number-one job is your education. We want you to be lifelong learners. We want you to take ownership for your own learn. And we want you to make connections. Extremely important to make connections in classes, between classes, between you and your faculty members, between you and your advisors. These are extremely important in establishing yourself here at CAU and being able to navigate the life here at CAU. There are so many things involved in all of that that we don't have time today. I will have time to go over some of these things in great detail. I will answer questions at the back and around all of this. But let me encourage everyone to, again, stay engaged in your learning, know where the resources are on campus. I think Dr. Clem will talk, speak to some of that, and know that we are here to help move you from where you are to careers. That means we are going beyond graduation. We are moving you from when you enter this university to careers. You have a great part in making that happen, and I really fully expect that that is going to be your number-one business while you are here. Very soon, we will get into preparations to advise for the next semester. Hopefully, we'll have some time to have conversations around that today to prepare you. Again, students, you have a responsibility to be prepared for each one of these sessions, and we have processes that we want to help you navigate all the things that it takes to get from entry to career through the business school. Let me stop here and and ask Dr. Crystal Hudson to talk to you briefly before we move on to other areas.
Hi, again, I'm Dr. Crystal Hudson over Accounting and Finance. Before I get into the dress code, I guess, is what we want to talk about now. I want to welcome a new accounting professor, Dr. Osmond, who I believe is on the call today. Dr. Osmond, if you could unmute yourself. I think he's here.
Hi, how you doing? I'm here. And thank you for being here, and I look forward to work with you all. If I can be helpful to anybody, my office is 317 in the south floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, here's our new accounting professor teaching our accounting classes. Ms. Cook, could you put up the Commitment to Excellence dress code? So I know that most students are familiar with our commitment to excellence. To make a long story short, we expect you to be excellent, essentially. We also expect you to be excellent in terms of the dress code. What I'm going to share with you now is really just the basics of the dress code we expect when you're in the building, when you're in classes. Please understand, when you're in a corporate presentation, we expect you to be in business attire. So again, this is just for every day, our expectations for the dress code. So these are things that are unacceptable within the School of Business and the classroom or in the buildings. Of course, pajamas and footwear, things that are not non-streetwear is unacceptable, pants or jeans with holes or cut-off parts in inappropriate places, excessively tight garments and clothing that reveal your undergarments, sagging pants that reveal undergarments, swimwear or excessively a very tight attire, clothing that elude, profane, and have derogatory or offensive messages, excessively revealing clothing, including tank tops, halters, cut-off tops, so on and so forth, see-through clothing or clothing that reveal your undergarments, revealing piercings or tattoos on your stomach, chest, back, so on and so forth, durags, gold caps, baseball caps, hoods, and sunglasses, of course, headwear that is associated with the culture or religion or exemptions or exceptions. So again, this is just our Commitment to Excellence dress code. Again, we expect you to be excellent in terms of what you wear. Understand, we have companies and alumni, professionals coming and going in the School of Business, and you want to represent yourself as a School of Business student. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Hudson. Thank you, Dr. Hudson. Let me have Dr. Vest step up and talk a little bit about advising on related issues.
Sure. Thank you, Dean. First of all, welcome again, everyone. And again, to reiterate what Dr. Hudson said, we do want to maintain a professional atmosphere for everyone. It is mutually beneficial to all of us, the faculty, the staff, the students, and the community. So please be mindful of that. With regard to registering, first of all, again, welcome back face-to-face, and there are certain benefits that are derived from being face-to-face. There are others that are derived from being virtual. As you can imagine, now that we're back face-to-face, there are some things that are advantageous. That is, you can walk down the hall, always see advisor, and get things done. On the other hand, you may or may not know who your advisor is. So first of all, we would like, really, if we haven't done this already, let me rewind. Ideally, this is the way it should unfold, and in many ways, it unfolded in a very appropriate way while we were virtual, and that is, your respective advisor, he or she should reach out to you by way of email and introduce himself or herself to you as your respective advisor. And in so doing, going forward, once you contact, once your advisor reaches, contacts you, should subsequently do these three things. First, follow your plan of study. If it's marketing, management, finance, accounting, supply chain, whatever that plan of study is, you should follow that to the T. And if I just reiterate what the dean says, I like the dean constantly reiterates that you should know where you are in the scheme of things and approximately when you should graduate, because you should be, that's like your Bible, let me say. So whatever your plan of study is, follow it to the T. Second of all, go through your respective degree works, which is very clear. We'll tell you the classes that you still need, and you'll follow that to the T. Many students that are first-year students are advised by the university, that is Dr. Clem's office. So many times, your classes are set from the university during your first year, and oftentimes during your second year. Going forward, once you declare your major, your concentration, I should say, once you have a concentration, then you follow that program of study. Go into your degree works and follow it to the T. It will tell you the classes that you still need to take and the subsequent sequence with which you should follow them. Thirdly, fill out your web registration form so that we have some kind of record, as in the proposed classes that you plan to take. Afterwards, we will send you your PIN number, and you can register accordingly. Although it's not a foolproof method or a process, many times, the courses that we agree upon are just that. So don't find yourself drifting off once you get your PIN number to a lot of courses that are not in sequence. Many times, you will take courses that are way out of sequence, and you may get bumped from that respective class. Also, let me back up. Be sure that you declare your concentration. If you haven't, go into DocuSign, which is on the registrar's web registration, and be sure that you declare your concentration. If you don't declare your concentration early on, your degree works won't populate appropriately, because it will have a kind of a blank, I mean, it will have your first two years there, but it won't really populate as into your concentration. So be sure, if you have a concentration, go onto the degree of DocuSign, and be sure to declare your concentration. Finance and Accounting, that is Dr. Crystal Hudson, Supply Chain Management Economics, Dr. Paul Brown, and I'm with Marketing Management and International Business. So again, it's a three-fold process. We reach out to you. Ideally, you follow us back with your respective plan of study, your degree works, and your web registration. Afterwards, we should guide you throughout this process, and not only will the registration process work as a process to get your PIN number and so on and so forth. It's also a chance to do some mentoring and some career guidance and some professional development, because we are touchpoints in your respective careers and your matriculation through this great university. So we get a chance to deal with rapport with you, give you some ambition, work out some things that you may or may not be interested in, and to give you some guidance. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. And if there's anything else I need to add, Dean, please let me know. If not, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Thank you so much, Dr. Vest. I'm sure there will be questions coming from the students on this. Since I have a few minutes in this segment left, I'll take the liberty to recognize my grad students who are on the call. I know there is a number of grad students. I know that most of the things that we've addressed so far speaks to undergraduate matters, but things like the connections and those kind of things apply to all of you. So to my grad students, welcome. And again, especially to the new first-year grad students, welcome to CAU and take full advantage of the resources we have here. We have a lot of resources. I want to take the time to acknowledge our winning team, as you may have seen in the news already, and more will be coming along. Our MBA case team won first place at the recently concluded National Black MBA Association Annual Conference. That deserves a round of applause, everyone.
Yay!
That is, that is a pretty big deal. Let me start by acknowledging the advisor, Dr. Lynn Patton. Dr. Patton, are you on? Is Dr. Patton on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Dr. Patton is the now world-famous advisor of our winning team. Let me give you the floor to talk about this wonderful team and what they accomplished.
Hi, everybody. I just want to say thank you for your applause and just want to thank everybody in the School of Business for the support. We couldn't have done it without everybody. We went into classrooms. We, you know, met with students. We got feedback from faculty. And most importantly, we had amazing students to participate in the competition. So, you know, we view this as a school win, for sure. I just want to thank you for your support. I want to thank our students for the hours and hours of work that we put in, because it definitely did pay off. And, you know, I just want to, you know, thank them also for, you know, showcasing their talent so people can understand the amazing students that we have here and the quality of education that we can provide in the School of Business. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Patton. Thank you for leading this team to victory. It is your experience, your coaching that has made this happen. Congratulations. I should also share that we also had an undergraduate case team that performed exceptionally well. You have to know the level of competition. We don't have time in this forum to tell you the level of competition. Our undergraduate team performed fantastic in their presentations. They did not win finally, but they won in our eyes, and we congratulate them. Professor Renee McCoy was the advisor for that team. Give them a round of applause as well.
Yay, yay.
Time, I have one minute to yield back. Dr. Kimbrough, I yield one minute back to you to continue the program.
Thank you very much, Dean. Well, I would like to also underscore, Dr. Patton, hell of a job, first-place National Black MBA. That is quite an accomplishment. Also, Professor Renee McCoy with the undergraduate team, and you're exactly right. This is an opportunity for Clark Atlanta University School of Business to shout it from the rooftop, not only the caliber, but the quality of the education that we are rendering here in the School of Business. And just like Hansel and Gretel, with the breadcrumbs going through the forest, all that leads back to the leadership of Dr. Savannah Shidoka. So Dean, thank you very much. Job well done to you and your executive staff. For the sake of time, let me go ahead and pass along right now to Dr. Cynthia Clem. As I mentioned before, she is the Executive Director for the Center of Academic Achievement and Student Success. I work hand and glove with Dr. Clem with my first-year students' business cohort, and she does a fantastic job. She is going to go ahead and give us an academic advisement overview in 10 minutes, and from there, we will go ahead and progress into any questions or concerns that any of the participants might have who are on this call. So Dean, for the following 10 minutes, Dr. Dean Clem, that is, the stage is all yours. You stand front and center. Please tell us exactly what we need to know.
Thank you very much. May I share my screen, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you all. I always appreciate the opportunity to join you all for these very important sessions and discussions. I think that you all have done a fabulous job of making my presentation for me today. Here are just some of the points that I plan to cover. I do have a slide presentation, so if you all would direct your attention there, because I am not going to read to us. One of the first things I want to make students aware of is the calendar. And this is an abbreviated calendar of what is happening. You all know, next week, we're into midterm exams, and at the same time, we will begin the FAFSA process for academic year '22, '23, for those of you who will not be graduating from Clark Atlanta in May of 2022. Fall break is scheduled October 4th and 5th. We will actually begin academic advising, and I want to encourage students to do what Dr. Vest just talked about in terms of scheduling your appointments to meet with your faculty advisors. With the first-year students, you all will remain with CAS, with the retention and graduation specialists, and we will actually generate second semester schedules for the first-year students. We will be in Dr. Kimbrough's first-year seminar, typically accompanied by Ms. Cook to talk to the first-year students. Last week, we completed our mandatory Academic Student Success Workshop with the Ju- Last week, we completed our mandatory academic student success workshop with the juniors. We still have, I think, 56 students who need to complete that workshop before we move forward with advisement. And beginning tomorrow, we will conduct the sophomore academic student success workshops with all of our sophomore students. And that email, if it has not gone out, will come out as a reminder again today. Reminder, thanks, we have the fall break. The next break will be Thanksgiving break. And then the last day of classes and course withdrawal period is December 1st, followed by the reading period. Just so that you all are aware of those timelines, the registration timeline has not been put out when we will actually begin course registration. We will share that information with you all in more detail. The slide I have up now is the classification of students, which also lets you know where it is based on the number of credit hours. Be mindful as you look at degree works. Degree works includes the number of credit hours you are currently attempting. So you do want to use the number of credit hours you have actually completed in order to determine your classification at the university. This is my slide about course load. Students, remember, when you take 12 credit hours, once you've paid for 12 hours, you can take up to 18 credit hours. 18 credit hours is the maximum. There is a university course overload process that requires permission from your department chair and faculty advisor. And the GPA requirement is a minimum of a 3.25 GPA. Note that you have to pay for the additional credit hours. And even with the course overload, you all are still only able to take 21 hours in a fall or spring semester. And I've been trying to make certain that we adhere to the registration timeline. So January 11th will be the last time that you all should be able to to generate requests for course overloads for the spring semester of 2022. Some of the common holes that prevent students from registering are listed here. We also have in the AV holes, your MATH and your SAS workshops. If you all do not complete those workshops and submit your academic planning forms, that hold is going to remain on your account. So please make certain you do that. My bold note on the bottom is you may be advised, even if you have a hold on your account. So as Dr. West articulated earlier, when your faculty advisors reach out to you, even if you know you have a hold on your account, and there are very few holes on accounts at this point in the semester, please make certain that you are advised because again, much like what happened in July of 2021, if something should miraculously happen where your entire bill is paid in full, you want to make certain that you have been advised, that you're able to then go into Banner to generate a class schedule for yourself for the subsequent semester. Just as a reminder for our continuing students, the implications of the pass, no pass, please be reminded that if you have a pass or a P on your transcript, that P indicates to everyone that you earned a final grade of D in a particular class. If that class was college composition 105, 106, math 109, 110, or a major course, that pass is not a pass for you. You need to go back to repeat that course. If there are any courses that you earned a pass in, and that course, if your major, your curriculum requires that you have a C or better, you will need to go back to repeat that class. So please make certain that we do that. Because in most instances, those P grades are probably prerequisites to major courses that you need to take in the discipline. There are no quality points associated with the P, nor does a P factor into your grade point average. The letter grade F was automatically changed to the no pass or the NP. And again, no credit hours, no quality points, and those courses also need to be repeated if you received a no pass. The letter grade of C, students had the option if they earned a final grade of C the past year, to take a P star star as the final grade. And that P star star on the transcript signals to us that the student actually earned a grade of C and the student opted to take the P star star because the P star star does not average into the GPA. So for example, some students may have had two Cs and two As. If the student took the P star star, the student's final GPA for that term was a 4.0. So there are instances where students did take that option for the P star star. And again, I'm speaking in the past to our continuing students. For all of our undergraduate students, there is a satisfactory academic progress requirement at the university that you earn at least a 2.0 GPA to avoid being placed on academic warning the first time academic probation for a subsequent time. And if you're on academic probation, you failed to increase your overall GPA to a 2.0, you will be suspended from the university. So students are placed on SAP if they don't earn the 2.0 and if they do not successfully complete 67% of the course credits that they attempt. Course withdrawals are included in that. I have a lot of first year students who've been reaching out to us about dropping classes. Let's not get in the pattern of dropping classes because it does have implications for satisfactory academic progress, which has implications for your financial aid. If you are not meeting SAP, then you are not eligible for financial aid. You will need to submit an appeal with supporting documentation and the committee will need to review to make a decision with reference to that. So please be very mindful of that process. Tools that you all will need for virtual advisement, we covered this in the SAS and MATH workshops and we talked to the first year students about it again. Dr. West has already mentioned for the business majors, business administration majors, not so much accounting and econ, but for business administration, that you declare a concentration so your degree works reflects accurately. Please make certain that you all are composing emails to request appointments with your advisors. He moved. So, Dear Dr. Kimbrough, my name is Cynthia Clem. My 900 number is 777-9311. I would like to schedule an appointment to meet with you about registering for spring semester 2022. I look forward to your response and I am eager to talk with you about my academic plans. Sincerely, Cynthia Clem, 900-779311. So please make certain that we are doing that as well. Please be on time and prepared. You should have reviewed your degree program and the academic transcript. We're doing some of that with you all in the SAS and MATH workshops so that we are hoping that that will prepare you to meet with your faculty advisor, that you all can have a more robust conversation overall about your academic performance, what are your goals, and more of a mentoring meeting as well. Please bring whatever additional documentation you need. If you're a transfer student, that you would have that degree works audit and your transfer evaluation. For students who are thinking about a winter session course, the mini-master, you would want to have that transient permission form prepared for that conversation if you're planning to cross-register. Either in the AUC or under ARCH, the other 17 participating schools in metropolitan Atlanta, you should have that form. And if you're requesting a course overload, make certain you have all of those documents with you. Kudos to the B school. You all do a phenomenal job. I've seen the emails that you send to your students with the degree program sheet for the students to complete and the web registration form in preparation. That is an excellent model that I would hope that all of the schools would emulate. Kudos again to the faculty and the academic leadership in that department. Because what you want to have happen is as soon as Banner Web opens up, you want to be able to go in to actually register for your classes. I would encourage you all strongly that you get registered as soon as registration opens up. This semester, we have some challenges because we had a lot of students who waited to register. It helps the dean and the academic leadership team to know, once all of the undergraduate students are registered, if there's still courses that they need to offer, they're looking at course enrollments to drive those requests to add additional courses. So that is also contingent upon the fact that students, you all are doing what you need to do. So the transient permission form is also a form that you all can find by way of DocuSign that is initiated via DocuSign. You would include your faculty advisors' contact information so Ms. Andrews would route that form accordingly. Please be reminded, academic forgiveness does not apply to transient courses. CAU doesn't offer a mini-master. And in the winter session, you all may only take one course, one three-credit hour course during a winter session. So please do not submit a form with multiple courses because you will only be allowed to take one course. Please also be reminded, unlike transfer credit, transient credit averages into your grade point average, albeit, we do not apply the academic forgiveness to that. A reminder about your financial aid, it's that time of year, October 1, your applications will be available. The Clark Atlanta code is here for your convenience. You need to complete your FAFSA and work with your parents and families to do that. Again, the IRS transcript is the easiest way, young people, for you all to get that information. It minimizes the number of errors. And, you know, when we have multiple errors, it also flags verification. So be mindful. February 1 of '22 is our deadline, our priority deadline for financial aid. So please make certain that you adhere to that. The verification process, you all should take care of. You should not leave spring '22 without knowing that your financial aid paperwork has been submitted, your verification is intact, and that everything is all together. Here's the contact information for the Office of Financial Aid. Advisors are assigned based on the alphabetical cluster. So based on the alpha cluster, here are your advisors, the scholarship director and coordinator. All of that information is here and it's also on the website. Just like to share that with students to make it easy for you to be able to do your own follow-up with your financial aid advisors. Academic resources, we talked about the CAS workshops will be in first year seminar. Sophomore students will begin tomorrow with the SAS workshops for our sophomores. MATH workshops, we're going to come back to complete the 56 students who did not. We're at like a 90% completion rate on the junior workshops. And then we will also launch a progress report campaign at midsemester based on your midterm grades. And we will do outreach with students. If you have any questions or concerns about those items, please contact Ms. Law. And then some of the campus resources that we have, if you all would take a screenshot of that. Today I learned in Dr. Kimbrough's first year seminar class that we have a person devoted to Canvas. So if you all are having any challenges with Canvas, please note that information is here as well. We are working to stand up tutoring this week in Kresge Hall. More to come about that. We will share the schedule once that schedule has been finalized at CAU. The retention and graduation specialists are available via Zoom and telephone appointments. We are not yet equipped with PPE in our offices, but we have been meeting with students. Mr. Jones, based on your majors, in business administration is that contact person. And you all may always feel free to follow up with me as you have done historically. If you have any additional questions or concerns that you need to have addressed, thank you very much. I did not pay attention at the time, but I was trying to be mindful.
Well, Dean, thank you very much. You have been more than gracious with your time. Again, several takeaways from that presentation. Number one, business students, please declare your major. I see it again and again and again. And that's going to be something that with your degree works, they need to know. Number two, schedule your appointment early. I mean, we've got every professor over here in the School of Business, as you know, is assigned a certain number of students to advise. Make sure that you become front and center and you get the appropriate time necessary to map out your schedule. Do your homework, bring documentation, whatever, add classes to Banner Web, log on to Banner Web. Do not delay. Do it early because those classes will fill up. So those are the primary takeaways that I got out of the presentation, though there are so many more. Well, at this particular point, I'm gonna open it up to the lumpen proletariat for Q and A. If you have any questions, and I'm gonna go ahead and take a look at the chat. All right, we have a question here from Ms. Jamar Harris. Thank you very much, Ms. Harris. When do seniors who are graduating spring '22 have to apply for graduation? Who would like to answer that question? And since Ms. Harris, I know Ms. Harris is either marketing or management, I'd like to maybe throw that out to Dr. West. Let me ask the question. Ms. Jamar Harris wants to know, when do seniors, and this is her actual question, when do seniors who are graduating spring of '22 apply for graduation?
Well, first of all, the university sets that deadline, and if I'm not mistaken, it has passed. However, it is a rolling process. For example, you should have done that if you're graduating by this December. And many times when we go through the registration process with you, as Dr. Clem showed the respective number of hours. First of all, your degree works will tell you also when to apply for graduation. Because on your degree works, once you get, I think, 88 hours or whatever, it encourages you to apply for graduation clearance. However, it is a rolling process. So we can do it at any time, but the university sets a deadline. I think it's already passed. But we'll work with you. But first of all, there is a process and it has gotten relatively streamlined by way of the online process. First and foremost, again, you fill out your, you go on to the web registration for the registrar, you get your plan of study. I mean, you get your undergraduate graduate application process. You type in the top part, you type in the part that says when you expect to graduate, and you really put your remaining semester courses into the document. Even though it says, don't write below that, many times you write below that line and let us know what classes that you're currently in, what classes are remaining. And after you do that, you subsequently include your plan of study, whether it's marketing, management, finance, accounting, whatever. So you must include those two documents, your graduation application and your plan of study. When we go over that, we make sure that everything is in order and we sign off on that. We subsequently send that to the university's registrar. So it is a deadline. I don't know off the top of my head, but it is triggered by your degree works. Your degree works will also tell you that. And I think it's once you reach 88
Yes.
hours. So if you're graduating this, thank you, Dr. Clem. If you're graduating this December, you should do it like you should have done it yesterday. If not, it is a rolling process and we accept them as we go, but we're trying to streamline it. But the main thing, you go on the web registration for the registrar, you obtain your graduation application, type in the top part, fill out your remaining courses, include your plan of study, and sign off on it. And I hope I covered it, but it's a very, it's an involved process. And as we've gotten better, we've gotten better because of online. So it's becoming more of a monologue and we're developing, even as we talk now, a template that is very succinct and to the point. Because again, this back and forth, back and forth, and it hasn't been bad, but it is a way to streamline this process. And it got relatively streamlined because of the online process. On the other hand, yes, you get a chance to walk down the hallway and see your advisor, whatever, whatever. But it is a streamlined process and we'll go forward with that as we progress.
Great. Thank you very much. To be respectful of time, we have another question. Mariah Edwards wants to know, is Panther degree works accurate in the aspect, sorry about that, comes of sufficient and insufficient grades? Who wants to jump in the sandbox? Again, the question, is Panther degree works accurate when it comes to sufficient and insufficient grades?
Dr. Hudson, I think you were about to say something. Why didn't you take on that and continue?
Well, I was gonna say back on what Dr. West was talking about, get with your advisor. And actually, we're doing it now. Send that information to your advisor and have them help you with your graduation application. In terms of degree works, yes, as far as I know, degree works is very accurate. The registrar worked with a couple of us a year ago to make sure that it was accurate. But in the School of Business, we really go by your plan of study. That's kind of your Bible, you know? And it should match up with degree works. If there's some discrepancy, go with your program of study. But the degree works, I mean, it would lead you, you know, it should lead you towards graduation. Now, I didn't understand the question about courses that's sufficient and non-sufficient. What did the young lady mean by that?
The follow-through courses?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Okay, Dean Clem. Okay, Dean Clem.
Okay. I was saying the student is probably talking about those students that, those courses that fall through that are not applying to a specific degree requirement in degree works. So those are the courses, to your point, Dr. Hudson, that students need to bring to the attention of their faculty advisor during the advisement session so that you all can clarify. And the faculty advisor will work with the student and the registrar's office to clarify.
Correct. Whether to move those classes up to where they need to be or move classes that accidentally fell into a general elective that should be someplace else. You you and your advisor would do that, or your advisor would help you with that.
And to that end, one thing that has come to my attention um, recently, those courses I talked about that are passed, that have passed grades. For example, if you took math one zero nine and earned a D and it has a pass, that may be erroneously sitting in your general elective category. So you know that you need to have a C or better and that course will not satisfy a general elective requirement. And then when you earn a C, that it will satisfy the math requirement. So um, you all should exercise some caution with that and recognize that for what it is.
Correct.
All right, we have uh, another question. This is from uh, Stephen Greenlee, who wants to know, what initiatives does the School of Business have planned for entrepreneur-minded students? Believe there needs to be more done. Uh, Dean Udoka, you wanna throw the first punch?
Absolutely. Uh, a great question. Uh, there are several initiatives that uh, we are undertaking in the school that we are going, that you will hear more about in the coming weeks and months. Uh, there is, uh, we we have a lot of activity around entrepreneurship that will go to answer the questions that uh, some of those that I've seen here. One, the Center for uh, Innovation and Entrepreneurial Development, CIED, is the home base in this university for developing entrepreneurial ventures, for working with students, for uh, amplifying the message of those who own businesses. So that center uh, of course, haven't been away for some time now, have been dormant. That center will be more active in the coming weeks. We have uh, new initiatives that have that have come through that center. Uh, Blackstone Launchpad uh, is a funding that we have received that allows us to work with students to amplify, again, their entrepreneurial ventures and get them closer to launch if they're not already launched. So you will see uh, us ask for students to be active uh, through the Launchpad uh, to to amplify their entrepreneurial messages. We have uh, I have a new grant that just came in uh, for what is called the National Center, National HBCU Center for Entrepreneurship. That uh, work is headed up by Howard University, where partner in that process. Uh, that is coming on board uh, in the next month or so. Again, one more avenue that will allow entrepreneurial activities to be uh, to 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 be supported, to be amplified. So there are a lot of activities along those lines. We have an innovation lab that is opening up uh, next month. And again, an area for you to to use, to ideate, to do more with your entrepreneurship. So there is a whole lot of activity around entrepreneurship that a lot of it are coming on board. You will have these resources at your disposal. I hope you you use them. Because that's what, that's what we are going on and planning with these resources for, is to support, to get your message out, to amplify what you do in that space.
Okay, and then uh, Dean, we have a follow-up question from Brandy Meriwether, because this uh, is along the same vein. Are there any strategies to increase business school spirit and amplify student excellence before they graduate and make a name for themselves in business? She goes on to say, we have a lot of students who have developed businesses. I am in a student group chat with more than two hundred student entrepreneurs from CAU. We often see people not supported or amplified, even though they are doing a great job while they are in an uh, while they're an undergrad. So uh, you alluded to that in certain respect of what you're bringing on board. But if you wanna make a brief comment in terms of the business school spirit and what these students are doing business-wise on campus?
Absolutely. Uh, a very good question, Brandy. And and I think it it lines up with uh, my answer to the earlier questions. I I recognize what you're asking about and that's why we've gone out and and fought vigorously for these resources that I mentioned that are coming in. I think the the business school spirit uh, starts with that that first-year program with Dr. Kimbrough. And as I've been uh, discussing with Dr. Kimbrough, we have to keep it alive throughout the program and and just build on what, on that foundation. We we have a plan, we have a plan. And it will, it will play out uh, hopefully in time for you to see it. But the business school spirit uh, lives at that beginning, in that first-year program with Dr. Kimbrough. And you all have been through it, you know what a fantastic job he does. We we just have to sustain that throughout our programming and that is coming.
Thank you very much. Uh, Rachel, and I apologize, Rachel, if I mispronounced your last name. Rachel uh, Bookpay wants to know, and this is somewhat reflective of what she's going through at the time. I transferred and a lot of my classes have not been placed in degree works. And it states, I need a first-year seminar, excuse me, seminar class, though I enrolled with more than forty-eight credits. Who do I speak to to get this rectified? Uh, Ms. Cook, you wanna jump in the sandbox? You know so much about degree works and how long it takes for degree works and your transcript uh, to be congruent.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Kimbrough, and thank you, Rachel, for such a great question, because we receive this quite a bit. What will typically happen is when you submit your graduation application and the registrar's office goes um, back and audit it, it will automatically calculate in that you have already satisfied. Um, you have enough hours to be exempt from uh, the seminar class.
Is that the end of your comments? See, Rachel went on to ask also, uh, she said, there are classes I need that are not being offered this semester. I need them to graduate in time. CAU states that all three hundred and four hundred level courses need to be taken with this institution. Uh, what is the strategy? What should she do?
No, I might add, I'm sorry, Ms. Cook, I I might add, some of those courses, and again, if you get involved with your advisors early on, some of the courses can oftentimes be applied as a course substitution, depending on the course. Because we are mindful in, as Dr. Clem said earlier on, know the courses that you need, because many times we build around those needs. So if we get them early on, we can see what's forthcoming. So that's, that's, I'm I'm playing rewind a little bit about the importance of making sure that you do your uh, registration early, because we can look at courses and we can see what needs to be done. Oftentimes, worst-case scenario, there are some courses, depending upon the courses, that can be substituted during your uh, matriculation at CAU. This is, this is not foolproof, so don't, don't, don't really run with this per se. But again, that's sometimes been the case about course substitution. Other than that, you wanna be really uh, uh, long-range in your uh, matriculation to really catch those things early on. And again, when you play, when you look at your plan of study and really map it out properly, it gives us a heads up as well. But again, it worse comes to worse, many times we've been able to do course substitutions. I I shouldn't say many, sometimes we can do course substitutions depending upon what that is. What were you gonna say, Ms. Cook? I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to reiterate what you were saying. This is a case where it's extremely critical that you're working with an advisor, because he or she will be able to guide you along that matriculation path and advise you when particular classes are going to be available and when they're not um, for your planning purposes, so that you don't encounter this type of um, scenario in your senior year. Also, another alternative is that students have the ability to cross-register. That's another option that is available to you. Um, you can cross-register over at Morehouse, um, if in fact that class is available. And not all three hundred and four, you know, some students are eligible to um, to take the class elsewhere and have it transferred back here during that particular semester. So that, that's another option as well.
Okay. And also, there'll be this arch program too.
Scenario. That's what I was just referring to, was the arch program where a student can fill out the documentation and take the class, for example, maybe at Georgia State, um, Atlanta Metro. Um, there's just a variety of different um, institutions. I will put it out there now that if that is something that you may be interested in doing, um, you must apply for that very early, because other institutions have very strict guidelines and deadlines in terms of when um, they will accept those applications and they typically do not budge. Uh, so I will say that if you're thinking about going, maybe, you know, taking a class over at Georgia State, you must adhere to the parameters in terms of dates and times of when the application will be accepted, okay?
Great. All right, the lovely and talented Alexia Lindo wants to know, hello. I am a second semester sophomore and I will be a junior in the spring. Will I be able to attend the junior workshop in the spring or is it just in the fall semester?
We offer workshops, fall and spring semester, so you will be able to complete your mass workshop in the spring.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any other questions and any students, raise your hand. I mean, you have a robust group of individuals who certainly, if they couldn't answer your question, they could point you in the right direction. So now is the time for you to have any of your questions or concerns addressed. Yes, Mr. Brooks?
Hi, how's it going? Um, I just noticed that a lot of um, information given had to do with undergraduate students, not as much for graduate students. Um, so I was wondering, uh, will there be another town hall with more information in regards to how um, our grades and how, you know, our classes and stuff will go? Um, do we just kind of take this information and then ask our advisor what applies to us and what doesn't? Um, how would you like us to go about this?
Uh, Dean Udoka, future town halls?
Yes.
For grad students.
Yes. I I all, I also, I have Jasper. We have uh, what we call a fireside chat with the dean for grad students. Now, that is on, in addition to this town hall, we have those fireside chats that allows you to have a conversation and ask questions. And uh, I know that Dr. Justice George has been asking for a date and time for that, so that is coming.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mariah Colton?
Yes, um, I'm actually a transfer student as well. This, I'm a first semester junior and I was just asking, besides emailing our advisors, do you guys recommend another way of getting in contact? Because I've actually tried to been in contact with multiple people to schedule an appointment to make sure that I'm on track to graduate in twenty twenty-three of spring semester. So I was wondering if there were more ways to get in contact with you guys other than emailing.
Okay, uh, either Crystal Hudson or Paul Brown, do you wanna address Ms. Colton's concerns?
I would say the, the best way is to get uh, to us through email. But if your advisor is not responding, I would email the department chair uh, of that advisor. If they're accounting and finance, you would email me, you know, marketing, management, Dr. Vest and supply chain or decision science and econ would be Dr. Brown. So start with your advisor, then in with your uh, department chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hudson. Um, Diamond Allen Bookman wants to know, where do we find more info about the Blackstone Launchpad?
I just dropped the press release in the chat.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you wanna comment about that ever so briefly, Ms. Meriwether?
Well, I think it's a really great opportunity, as I look for it, I read about it. So I I look forward to hearing more information. It kind of leads to my question is more about like how uh, as a students can benefit the B-school? Um, in any just immediate goals or t- goals for twenty twenty-one um, that you all wanna see?
Yes, I think, I think the press release gives you very high-level information about the Launchpad. Uh, but what, what is in, the intention of the Launchpad is really to, uh, our measure of performance is how many students we run through this program, we, how many students we help in the duration of entrepreneurship. Yeah, to build that entrepreneurial mindset. So uh, you will again see more, because we're standing up a lot of these programs as we speak there. There are so many resources coming, especially in this area. So you will have opportunities to benefit from this, uh, if you just want to take advantage of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have a question from, I just saw it, I apologize. Here we are, Eternity Mitchell. Good afternoon. I believe my advisor is Dr. Vest, although I am not completely sure. My major is business administration with a concentration in entrepreneurship management. One of the department chairs wanna tackle that?
Uh, yes, in that area, that would definitely be me as the Chair of Marketing Management and International Business. So if you have to reach out to me, that's no problem, or you may have an advisor already that you may or may not have contacted. But at the end of the day, contact me and we'll get you sorted out. Either by way of me handling your in- your information or directing you to your respective advisor.
Okay.
Also, Dr. Kimbrough, if I may, if I may add, going back to the dean's uh, question earlier about entrepreneurship, students, be mindful of the um, you have, you have four classes that are called curriculum, uh, credential minor concentration. And especially those of you that are interested in entrepreneurship, as you know, entrepreneurship is a very holistic discipline. It's not just really narrow. So you might have an entrepreneurial focus that deals with how do you market your particular product? How do you finance your particular product? How do you keep the books for your particular product? How do you manage the supply chain for your particular product? Uh, you may be interested in the arts. Be interested in mass media in terms of being an entrepreneur. So be mindful of, you have at least four classes that are called credential minor concentration, where you can kind of put things together. So you don't necessarily have to be very rigid per se, especially when it comes to entrepreneurial endeavors. Because again, if you think holistically, the university has given you at least those four classes as credentials, minor and concentration. And you can use those for some of the things that you're more interested in. And I just wanna use that for those that are interested in entrepreneurial endeavors. But you can use that for any area, like, for example, we're starting to branch out into a sales and marketing institute. So again, many of those courses that are, that that may or may not be real rigid or that you wanna be more creative with your plan of study, you do have at least four classes, really six if you include your free elective and your general elective. You really have six classes that you can kind of tinker with in terms of your personal or professional interests. And I wanted to just use that with the backdrop of entrepreneurship, because entrepreneurship is not really a a a very uh, rigid discipline per se, because you have entrepreneurs that that some can read and write, some can't. So it's really an artistic flavor as well as a scientific flavor. So be sure to use those credential uh, minor concentration classes as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, yes. And entrepreneurship is near as, near and dear to my heart. Obviously, what we need here at CAU is an annual day, day and a half entrepreneurship conference. Moving on, Stephen Greenlee, Mr. Greenlee, your hand has been up forever. Stand front and center, stand still, looks like you're on the move. What is your question?
Hello, so um, I've been seeing that a lot of fellow business students and entrepreneurs on campus feel like there needs to be a way to bridge the gap between students and administration. So I wanted to know, would y'all be interested in somehow meeting with certain students where we could also give y'all some ideas on things to boost engagement and things like that, like pitch competitions and bit, having speakers come, things like that. Having speakers come, things like that, because we feel like that's a big need out here because we have a lot of greatness, but. There is not being cultivated. Um, I recently got invited to a pitch competition for Morehouse that is today. And they were discussing it with us and we were just expressing like we feel like Clark needs more things like that also. So would y'all be interested in bridging that gap?
Great question.
Uh, uh, absolutely. Uh, I it depends on how long you've been around. We we actually have a lot of those. Uh, we've had pitch competitions, we've had hackathons. Um, in the period that I've been here and and typically those are across the AUCC. So that all three schools are in our pitch competitions, uh, all three and the hackathon. So as you are being, as you are there. In that one, we've had some in the past, we will have some in the future. Part of what we will do with uh. With the launch pad as well as the set, the National Center for Entrepreneurship is uh those kinds of activities. So definitely we have to provide forums to get some ideas from you as well. But those those activities uh have been here and there's some plan for the future.
Thank you very much, Dr. Udoka. Last question, and it's going to take us in a completely different direction. Shamen Thompson wants to know, will students who receive a pass in spring twenty twenty be forced to retake the course?
Dr. Glenn does answer in the chat.
So for for every undergraduate student, every undergraduate student must earn a C or better. In college composition one oh five and one oh six. Based on your degree requirements, that will determine whether or not that D or that pass from the spring. Is satisfactory or do you need to repeat the course? In my presentation, I made examples of college comp one oh five, one oh six in the B school. You have to complete math one oh nine and one ten with a C or better. There are all of your courses that are C bus courses, you have to earn a C or higher. In is my understanding in order for you to move on to the next course. So if there's a specific question, you can feel free to email me and I'll take a look at it. And or it would be a good place for you to have a conversation with your assigned faculty advisor as well.
Okay, well, our time is certainly up and we have closing remarks from uh Dean Udoka. Again, I would like to thank everybody who contributed and made this possible. It seems like we need a few more. Town hall meetings because so many loose ends that are left open, but it certainly has us pointed and trending in the right direction. So uh Dean Udoka, we salute you for that. Um, for those of you whose questions were not answered, this is going to give you a frame of reference. You could just go ahead and listen to what uh has been deliberated for the last hour. And you know who could certainly provide the answers to some of your questions, so I suggest that you pursue those individuals. Dean Udoka, please uh ever so briefly give us closing remarks and tell us what to expect on the horizon.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kimbrough. Thank you for moderating this session. Uh, you do an outstanding job as you always do. Uh, uh, students, I appreciate those of you who stopped in uh on this down hall as I indicated. This time is for you, is to have this dialogue. And Dr. Kimbrough said, if you did not have a question answered. Please reach out to someone. As that's that last part and I I talk about making connections. Reach out to one of us on this call. We are all in Wright Young Hall. You can find us. Reach out to one of us. If I don't know the answer, I'll I'll get you to the right person who knows the answer. Let me take just the a a minute or two to let everyone know that uh. Starting this week, we celebrate the seventy fifth year of the founding. Of the School of Business Administration. Of course, we we salute the founding institutions, uh Atlanta University and Clark College. Uh, established respectively in eighteen sixty five and eighteen sixty nine. There's a lot of history that you will hear from us in the course of the year that we would celebrate uh the founding of our school. So in the five years in existence is very, very significant. Uh, especially for us in the African American community. The School of Business, uh, uh, at least at the AU Graduate School of Business. Was established in nineteen forty six. There's there's work that was done to get there. You'll hear that as we begin this celebrations. Starting on Friday, this Friday, which is the twenty fourth. We will start celebrations that have been we scaled down from what we've been planning for a year. Because of the continuing issues with the pandemic. But we will have uh and what I call, let me make sure I get it right. Uh, the dean's executive leaders series. Fireside chat. You you have already received uh information on this. You will hear some more. That will be the kickoff to the occasion. And on Saturday, the twenty fifth, which marks the actual day of the founding of the school. We will have a virtual event that will be available to everyone. The activities commemorating this uh significant milestone. Will be year long. Uh, some of the things again that we have planned to do upfront here, we have delayed. And we'll pick up a lot of things in the spring. Let me tell you the significance of where we stand. When the school was founded. This uh business school, it was the only. Graduate business school that Black School obtained in this country. We were the first. And there are a lot of things that surround that. So for that reason, the students especially. Uh, don't take these things that we have for granted because it took a lot of work for folks to stand up a program. That has survived till now, and we have to celebrate these achievements. There's a lot of activities that we have planned. We will roll that out as we go. When you see uh these activities, please come out and be part of it. It starts this Friday. Uh, be on the lookout for it. Sorry, I do a little bit longer, but I think it's important to to announce this to you. And you'll uh again see a lot, a lot more coming in the coming weeks, months and through the year. Till September twenty twenty two. Again, thank you to all that have been here, Dr. Glenn and and the and the leadership team here, Dr. Kimbrough. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, students, for being here. Look forward to the next one.
Thank you, Dean Udoka.